These rises, we welcome Chaplain Deb Forstner to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Chaplain.
These are the words of Pope Francis. Remember to be happy is not to have a sky without a storm, a road without accidents, work without fatigue, or relationships without disappointments. To be happy is to find strength in forgiveness, hope in battles, security in the stage of fear, and love in discord. It is not only to enjoy the smile, but also to reflect on the sadness. It is not only to celebrate the successes, but to learn lessons from the failures. It is not only to feel happy with the applause, but to be happy in anonymity. Being happy is an achievement for those who can travel within themselves. To be happy is to stop feeling like a victim and become your destiny's author. It is to cross deserts, yet to be able to find an oasis in the depths of your soul. It is to thank God for every morning for the miracle of life. Being happy is not being afraid of your own feelings. It is to be able to talk about you. It is having the courage to hear and know. It is confidence in the face of criticism, even when unjustified. It is to kiss your children, pamper your parents, to live poetic moments with friends, even when they hurt us. To be happy is to let alive the creature that lives in each of us, free, joyful, and simple. It is to have the maturity to be able to say, "I made mistakes." It is to have the courage to say, "I am sorry." It is to have the ability to say, "I love you." May your life become a garden of opportunities for happiness. That in spring, may your life be a lover of joy; in winter, a lover of wisdom. And when you make a mistake, start over again. You will find to be happy is not to have a perfect life, but use tears to irrigate tolerance, use your losses to train patience, use your mistakes to sculptor serenity, use pain to plaster pleasure, use obstacles to open windows of intelligence. Never give up on happiness, for life is an incredible show. And then that ends the quote from St. Francis. Dear God, please bless this meeting of the City Council tonight with Jesus' model of humility, service, mercy, and love through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is 5:37, January 19, 2021. We'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Yep.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. We also have a number of individuals joining us via Zoom tonight. So just heads up, we're gonna leave the participants via Zoom muted. If you want to make a comment, just please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and we'll do our best to accommodate those comments as appropriate. So just again, we're gonna not allow people to unmute. I think there's too many people. We have a free-for-all at times. So just please just respect one another, raise your hand, and we'll do our best to accommodate those requests. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. It's really nice to have all of you back in the room. Been looking forward to this for some time. There are two additions to the agenda. Both of them are listed on the agendas before you, one being a resolution for the United Prairie Foundation to submit a grant application for some additional Prairie restoration work in some of the city parks, and then amending a resolution we passed previously for a federal recreational trail grant application, adding some language that the city will maintain Ferber Park for no less than 20 years and will serve as fiscal holes for that project.
Those are under new business?
Yep.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll follow, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you. Brent, all in favor of that motion? Motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign? That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. There are no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we will have a resolution this evening recognizing the retirement and 18 years of service for Ken Wellennets. I'll read that resolution. Whereas Ken Wellennets has submitted his intent to retire effective February 5, 2021, and whereas Ken began employment for the city of Fergus Falls on January 21, 2003 as a machinist welder, and whereas on September 13, 2013, Ken transferred to the position of shop supervisor, where he has remained in this position until the present time. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept Ken's resignation and thank him for his 18 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. The above foregoing resolution was offered at a regular meeting by Councilmember Jim Fish, who moved its adoption and was seconded by Councilmember Caroline Gustafson, and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Thank you, Ken. Thank you for your service to the city of Fergus Falls. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have six items for consideration. If anyone would like to discuss any of those items individually, we can remove them and do so. Hearing none, I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda as submitted. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, item number one is a resolution accepting a donation for the dog park and to authorize budget adjustments.
I'd like to offer that, please. I'll offer that resolution.
Offer that. Thank you, Scott.
I'll second him.
Thank you. Brent?
Can we ask how much it is?
Yeah, I believe it's $7,500. Is that correct, Glenn?
Little more, $7,969. So just wanna make a public word of thanks to Tammy Revering and Chelsea Bella Hertz for all the work they've put into raising these funds and getting this dog park going.
Yes, I would echo that, and they took it upon themselves last year to go out and raise some money. They did that. The city's meeting them halfway. We're gonna build this park this spring, correct? We have the location, we have the materials, and again, to Tammy and to Chelsea, thanks for raising that money and making that a reality. So with that, we have a resolution. And a second, any further discussions or questions from the council? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution to support the authority to impose a local sales tax to fund the specific capital improvements providing regional benefit to establish the duration of the sales tax revenue to be raised by the tax and to authorize the city to issue bonds supported by the sales tax revenue. I'll call on Andrew Bremseth to give us an update of what this item is.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. A year ago at this time, we were having the same conversation after several months of work by a community task force and others to identify projects as it relates to a future sales tax opportunity. In the last legislative session, we were off to a good start. We had a good hearing in front of the House Committee, and we had a Senate hearing scheduled, and everything abruptly closed down due to COVID-19, and we're still kinda operating in the same way. So needless to say, none of these proposals statewide were moved forward in the last legislative session. So we're back before you as a legislative committee this evening, hoping to get your blessing to give it a shot again here in 2021. As you may recall, there are three projects. The Aquatic Center, a trails project, which included segments of the Glacial Edge Trail, the Renaissance of Old Smoky Hill, among other things, and then finally, the D Lagoon Improvement Project, which was the significant upgrades to the campground area based on a master plan the city had done previously, and then upgrades to the softball and soccer complexes, including lighting systems for all the fields. So at a high level, those are the projects. Nothing has changed since we talked about this last year. As you may also recall, the process for these sales tax projects is to get legislative approval first, and then they go before the local voters at a general election to be voted on separately as individual questions. So knowing that we just had a general election in 2020, the next opportunity to put these before the local voters is in November of 2022. So this is trying to get the legislative hurdle out of the way in advance of giving the taxpayers that voice and opportunity to do that. The only other thing that I would add is that this would not increase the sales tax that's collected. We would retire the bonds of the library sales tax with the sales tax for the library first, and then this would be an extension of those proceeds. So these projects would not be able to be funded prior to the ending of that sales tax for the library. And as you will note, you guys all get monthly updates on this from Bill Sanmore. The collection continues to be really positive, and we anticipate that second to third quarter of next year, those bonds will be paid off, and then the sales tax will have to go away. Unfortunately, the timing no longer works out that it would just go from one to the other. It was probably gonna be a small sunset there before we would be able to do this, if any of the projects were successful. So with that being said, we're just looking for your blessing to do the same thing this legislative session, to move forward, get this information to the tax chairs by the end of the month. I say that with maybe tempered expectations. This legislative session's gonna be challenging. The legislature has to approve a budget, and obviously, there's budgetary constraints at that level and decisions that have to be made, and they continue to be the only divided legislature in the country. So they have a few hurdles to overcome, and they'll spend substantial time on that. But we wanna be ready should the opportunity present itself this session. Otherwise, we'll be having this exact conversation again, getting ready for the 2022 session. So that's where we're at. That's on behalf of the legislative committee, and I'd take questions or follow up.
Thanks, Andrew. I just would mention a couple things. As you mentioned, it's procedural to get it to the tax chairs. So that if they do, which is a big if, they take up any of these measures this year, we're ready. Second thing is, before this would ever go on a ballot, it's gonna be back to the council. So we'd have the opportunity to amend it with the work of any of those committees up or down, or any additions or subtractions from that. So it'll have to come back to the council before anything was... This is procedural, like you mentioned. And then obviously, just to really stress the fact that the whole intent is to get it to the voters and let the voters make that decision at a general election. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure to... I think you mentioned those, but just to emphasize those points.
And just to touch on that, coming back to the council, the intent here is just more of a procedural thing and have it in hand. But obviously, the costs are gonna have changed, and we're gonna need to look at different construction costs going forward. And none of these three projects have updated numbers. So the council would have it coming back before us to make decisions on those individual projects going forward. So we're not making the decision today. It's just more procedurally to get it in the hopper so we're ready to go.
What I would say to that, Your Honor, if I may, is some of these numbers that we had last year have built in inflation in them because we were kind of projecting when the projects may happen. For example, the aquatics numbers are 2022 numbers to begin with, and D Lagoon. But yes, I agree, they wouldn't all happen in 2022, so we would have to get better numbers. We just haven't done any of that legwork, like Councilmember Anderson said. This is really just procedurally as it relates to what we worked on last year.
Yeah, Tom.
I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you, Tom. Let's get a second before we have any further.
I'll second. Thank you.
Yeah, during the election, I heard from voters that said, "We do something. Help our city grow, get some projects, give things for families that live here to do, give people reasons to come here and visit and spend their money." And that's what these projects are gonna do. They're gonna improve our quality of life. They're gonna make it a more attractive place to come and live and work and raise a family. And this is what people have asked us to do, and we need to keep moving full steam ahead on it. It's a great slate of projects that passed the council unanimously. And yeah, let's keep moving forward on it.
Thanks, Tom.
On things like the Aquatic Center with the whole COVID thing, potentially, some of that might structurally change. Does that... The project that we kind of submit, I'm assuming we just get approved on the dollars? And then as long as we build an aquatic center of some description, is that okay? Or do you have to resubmit? I mean, I can't see people being in a swimming pool like they were. The world's changed, so it's kind of like things are different.
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, I'd be glad to speak to that. You're exactly right. It's the dollar amount they're approving, not the specifics of the project. And the other thing I would say is, like I said, we have inflators in these numbers. We have contingencies. And for that project in particular, the council's expectation, if I recall, was there would be a fundraising component to that. And we're collecting the entire project cost as kind of a safety net in these numbers. So there's gonna be substantial wiggle room if the fundraising component still is a requirement, still is there to make those changes. But yes, we're limited to the dollar amount that we ask for and we're approved for. And of course, you don't wanna substantially change a project because you want the intent of the voters to be what prevails. But if the committee needs to give this another look and design things in the locker room differently or parts of the pool, that's not gonna be anything alarming to the legislature, and it wouldn't slow this process down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I received an email, and I told the individual, Mr. Layton, who's on the call, I would answer his question. So I'll do the best I can to answer those that haven't been addressed. One of the questions was, will this increase the current city sales tax rate? I think Andrew answered that. The answer is no. It would not. The question was asked, what is the city's current sales tax? State is 6.875. City has a half-cent sales tax. For the library, the county has a half-cent for the roads, which makes the total inside the city limits of 7.875. Just a couple more real quick. Both items, the trail project and the D Lagoon project, have been outlined. That's available in the city packet and also in previous minutes. And then the other one, the question was to the Aquatic Center operating budget. The best numbers that we had from USA Aquatics to answer that question, and I would maybe question them, I think we all have, based on talking to other communities. But from USA Aquatics, it was the projected revenue was $290,000 with expenses of $259,000. So those are the numbers we have. I'm not saying... I think we have to look at those with wide-open eyes before we go into anything. But those are the numbers that we have from the consultant who worked on that project. So I just wanted to answer those, as I said I would. And if there's any other discussion from the council? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. I'm sorry. Under presentations of claims, tonight we have claims in the amount of $3,021,056.3. If anyone has any questions, we will direct them to our city finance director.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. There are reports from staff or administrative officers. Under old business, tonight we have an update on the RTC master plan. I know we have consultants and members of the master plan task force with us on Zoom. So I will turn it over to our community development manager, Clara Beck, to introduce this item for us tonight. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Yeah, so about a year ago, back in January of 2020, the city employed the services of CDG Group, which is a consulting firm of, I believe, what are you guys? Economic and... Well, they'll introduce themselves. But we've been working with CDG Group for about a year now. They've been conducting a master plan of the Kirkbride complex. They have engaged the community, and now they are going to be giving us an update on where they are in the planning process. So I will turn it over to Jana King, Bill Smith, and Bill Hickey.
Good evening.
There we are. We are unmuted now, or at least Jana and I are. Thank you all. We'd also like to share our screen, if that's possible, Clara.
Who will be doing the screen sharing? Which one of you?
Bill Hickey.
Okay.
And Bill, you might wanna start by introducing the firm.
I will. I'm Bill Hickey with Collaborative Design Group. We are historic architects, architects, engineers, master planners, and we are associated for this project with Jana King of Economic Development Services and Bill Smith of BICRO Associates, who will handle the regional planning, community outreach, and transportation planning. We thought it would be an opportune time to give an update on the progress of the master planned reuse study. We've just, in December, had a steering committee meeting and have made some good progress as we've gone. Tonight, most immediately, Clara mentioned, it's been about a year. As you can imagine, COVID disrupted this process as well as others. But the Historical Society has been very proactive in schedule adjustments. The due date for this study and the grant to be closed out in particular has been extended, actually into the fall of 2021. We do not envision meeting that time, but it's nice to know that they're respectful of the position we're all in and have allowed that time. Tonight, we want to walk through the preferred options that the committee had directed us to study in detail and summarize the physical assessment that we've conducted, and then talk a little bit about next steps. Just in terms of a refresher, the reuse study, this is about where we are in the process now. We've gone through the first three phases. We're beginning Phase Four with finance and implementation strategy in detail of the preferred and feasible alternatives. And that will condense into the final report. Jana, if you wanna take over at this point and just wave, and I'll switch screens for you.
Okay. The committee decided that there were really two priorities for us to look at. And the two priorities that were both weighted as their number ones were residential treatment, and that was specifically of PTSD and brain trauma, and the other one was housing. I'll go through both of those, starting with the residential treatment. So how we approached it was starting with a scan of how this is done nationally. We looked for treatment facilities that handle PTSD and brain trauma through internet search, and we also engaged the support of a national healthcare consultant, really a talented and experienced individual who's worked with behavioral health, neuroscience, market planning, and facility planning expertise. And her group had actually done some work with Lake Region at Fergus Falls. We conducted interviews with relevant leadership at Lake Region Healthcare, the Center for Victims of Torture, Hazelton Betty Ford, as a facility very involved with residential treatment. One of the key markets for PTSD and brain trauma is the Veterans Administration. We interviewed people in both Minneapolis and in Fargo. We recognize that Minneapolis has a big influence on the market, but sometimes things look different. If you're out in greater Minnesota or Fargo, and with your proximity to Fargo, we wanted to make sure we touched base there. And what we learned is that PTSD and brain trauma market is too limited. Nationally, what we saw is that every place that did PTSD and brain trauma also did depression, anxiety, addiction, and many other diagnoses. The PTSD and brain trauma is typically a co-diagnosis with other things. It can't be neatly segmented off as just its own element. And the more comprehensive approach that is required really brings in some things that the advisory committee didn't think were desirable. Brain trauma is slightly different than PTSD, and that requires more extensive therapeutic facilities. It also requires more technical equipment, more staffing. And retrofitting an existing building like the RTC would be very difficult to meet the requirements and for the facility to be efficient enough to meet today's insurance requirements and the financial aspect of things. There's really a long-term trend away from residential treatment also that impacts all forms of residential mental health treatment. Reimbursement is challenging from all payers except for private pay. So what we learned is basically the kind of people who might be able to handle the private pay would be either people who are quite wealthy or people who just got a really big insurance settlement. But in any case, that's a pretty small sliver of the market. And the insurance industry is really moving away from paying for residential treatment. COVID-19 has greatly accelerated the trend toward telehealth. Insurance now pays for it, and it's been really successful. We find that fewer people miss appointments. The mental health patients are often patients who miss their appointments, and they're missing many fewer appointments because they can get online. It's a big trend. And treatment for behavioral health is now done typically close to home so that the family networks and support systems are established when the treatment wraps up. So having a remote treatment residential in Fergus Falls did not seem to be a viable approach. Additionally, healthcare overall is moving away from physical infrastructure. New business models are evolving toward the hospital as a very high-need kind of operation, or home care. Margins are really tight, and efficient operations are critical, which makes it even more challenging to retrofit existing facilities. So what we learned basically is that the PTSD brain trauma market is not viable. The good news is that the other market that was considered of great interest to the advisory committee was housing, and they really looked at a continuum of housing, mixed-income senior veterans supportive housing. And you do have strong markets for housing in Fergus Falls. And fortunately, you had some recent studies. You had a little older housing study from 2014, a Housing Task Force report in March of 2019, and then an update that was done by Otter Tail County by Maxfield Research in May of 2020. So we had some nice, fresh data to work with. So we had some nice, fresh data to work with. Your Housing Task Force, which was a city of Fergus Falls Task Force, wrapped up in 2019, and they had four goals. One was to increase the available housing inventory for both new and existing housing units in Fergus Falls, to support affordable housing for all, to maintain the homes we have, and promote housing resources and development opportunities. A few key statistics from that report you can see on the right. You have population, you have both population and household growth. You've had it in the most recent decade, and you will continue to have it in the decade 2020 to 2030. And so you can see at the top the percentage change, and at the bottom, you can see the numeric change. So an anticipation of nearly 900 additional households or additional, no, I'm sorry. It's about 632 additional people and about 250 additional households in Fergus Falls. And the housing market also responds a lot to population. You have a substantial population growth projected during the upcoming decade in that 35 to 44 category. And then you also have substantial growth in the 65 to 74 and 75 to 84 age categories, which indicates that it's, you need to, there's an opportunity for senior housing and also to free up your existing housing stock for young families when you provide that senior housing. There's pent-up demand for additional market rate units in Fergus Falls and Otter Tail County. There were 632 units surveyed in the primary market area with a 3.6% vacancy rate and market equilibrium is about 5%. And we also were able to learn more about the features and amenities at recently renovated or new market rate properties. Those would be the expectations. You can see them, the stainless steel appliances, walk-in closets, balconies, in-unit washer dryer. So that will all play into the kinds of units that the architecture part of our team would design. And we'll be looking at that rental rate as we look at the financing strategies. You do also have cost, a substantial number of cost-burdened households, renter households in Fergus Falls and the greater Otter Tail County market. You have 48% of all renter households in Fergus Falls pay more than 30% of their incomes for rent. 30% is sort of a benchmark that you like to target so people have money for the rest of the things they need in life. And 69% of the renter households with incomes of less than 35,000 pay more. So you've got cost-burdened households, a need for some more affordable housing, as well as market rate housing. You can see from here that there's a growth anticipated in the elderly households. There's currently a waitlist. You do have the Nurses Cottage being renovated out there, but there's still additional market potential that we'll be considering. Veterans, none of your recent studies specifically addressed veterans' housing. But this recent study for permanent supportive housing can provide some insights into that because permanent supportive housing frequently addresses the challenges faced by veterans as well as some other populations. There are some financing programs specifically for veteran supportive housing, and they tend to be looking at larger markets. But it may be that you can find somebody who is a smaller regional developer who would look at that. Permanent supportive housing, this was the recent study that was done by Maxfield Research for Otter Tail County, and that serves households that have difficulty obtaining and maintaining self-secure housing due to life challenges and market barriers. These people tend to have incomes at or below 50% of the area median income. But many of them do have a form of income. It might be Social Security disability, Veterans benefits, and/or wage and labor income. So, and permanent supportive housing is proven to have benefits to the public sector. There was a 42-unit complex in Fargo that was analyzed and that saved over $200,000 over a 12-month period in terms of some reduced costs for healthcare and emergency shelter and other things. So you can see the income limits there. And, you know, if you have folks who are living less than $12 per hour, they are in that 50% of area median income. Overall, housing market in Otter Tail County is tight, and so landlords are very selective about tenants, and that creates more difficulties for folks who have a lower income or some other life challenges. Next slide. Bill, it's back to you. Do we?
Yep.
Okay.
We have literally been in every room of the complex now at this point. And the number-one comment, and I continue to be really impressed by how good of condition it is as a complex for its age, for its lack of occupancy. As many of you know, buildings that are not occupied often do less well in terms of environmental controls, things like that. And it does wear on the building. Some maintenance work is needed now, in part due to that. Others, work that's needed is just due to the natural age of the building and normal life cycles of materials and things. As time goes by, as you know, other work will become needed as well. The structure is sound. There are no places but one small area that I have any concerns of structural capacity or stability. For buildings of this type and age and in this situation, the roofs are always the concern. And true to form, there are some roof issues beginning at the RTC. There are some limited areas of missing shingles, that sort of thing. And in particular, the west detached has a flat roof area. It's the only flat roof on the whole complex. Of course, that has been leaking, and I'll show you some slides of that. It's really striking as an architect looking at reuse facilities all across the nation. The Kirkbride qualities are still there. There's wonderful daylight, opportunities for air and view, and really a great potential in the building. The tile floors are largely intact. That's another resource that it'd be hard to match these days. The nature of the building with the mass walls and the thermal qualities that they provide and acoustic qualities they provide also attractive as a resource for redevelopment. I mentioned the west detached. If you're very familiar, the very end of the last 20 yards or so of the complex on west detached has a flat roof, and that has deteriorated over time and has leaked into the building. This is the only place in the complex that needs a structural study to determine if there's been long-term damage here, if repairs needed. It's very minor in the scale of the complex. Many of you know that there is a concern of mold in the building that is principally confined, rather, to the lower level. It is normal for a building of this type left unoccupied and unventilated to start to have this problem. Nothing that I was able to see was not recoverable. It can be cleaned out, abated, and returned to use. And if the building's occupied and maintained, there would not be a continuing problem from what we've been able to see. The interior of the building has been altered a lot over time, as you can imagine, which in this circumstance is actually a good thing because that means the historic integrity of the building is confined more to the exterior, and we are allowed more of a free hand on the interior because the historic nature of it has changed over time. So less constraint, less concern over renovations, and many interesting features to be capitalized on as you go through there. The structural system, it has all these wonderful round columns. Fortunately, we found this one damaged column, which is not damaged at all. These wonderful round columns are actually just clay covers. It's a steel frame. Much of the exterior wall is mass masonry. These are great systems for renovation and adapting to new uses and really able to do things with the building. There's not a lot of structural limits to changes or modifications. To sort of back in on the housing study, as it became apparent that housing of some sort was going to be one of the feasible options here, we started looking at different layouts, different options. We haven't yet gotten to the point of ownership versus rental, condo versus apartment, in other words, sizes. So we made some very general, very conservative approximations for size and layout to help us understand how many units could be accommodated in this complex. We also made some assumptions in terms of space left for amenities. The point of all this is this is not a design. It's a feasibility test to see if this will work. And as we went through, the building, as you know, it has wonderful, different ranges and wings, and we're able to examine each of them in sequence so that, again, looking at perhaps a mix of uses, mix of housing types, there's different ways to approach this. So we went through and looked at both apartment layouts. How would each wing layout? How would each module layout? And each floor, what are the implications? What are the opportunities? We did this for different housing types, as I mentioned, apartments or condos. Condos being typically larger, typically a more multi-bedroom sort of thing. So we ended up looking at different ways that this came together. How could this complex be invigorated? You know, and again, very conservative, looking at the entire lower level becoming service, storage, mechanical spaces, those sorts of things. And then looking at what would be needed in terms of additional elevators, additional mechanical spaces, things like that. And it's a very, very solid opportunity there. We come back to that as kind of one of our key points that we want to leave you with. The building is solid. It needs some maintenance, but that is normal. Nothing out of step there. It will take time to redevelop. It simply, on its size, is something that will be more of a rolling renovation than all-done-at-once sort of implementation. And then, as Jana walked you through, I think there's great promise in market demand in the area for a housing mix here and its associated development. So the next steps that we will be heading into now are to take this housing continuum and start to drill into finance and implementation strategy for you on that. How do you take the steps to realize this? Where does this go? And then to talk with the advisory committee and yourselves in terms of continuing engagement and communication and keeping the transparency of the process going. With that, I think we'd throw it up if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
On the exterior brickwork, what was your kind of thoughts on that? Because it seems like there's a lot of bricks in general that are kind of, there's deterioration and they've cracked and fallen off. I mean, when you walk around the building, there's pretty much debris kind of all the way around.
There are situations, just, you can sort of see on the right-hand side here, you can see some, there are some eroded bricks. There are more than the bricks themselves. There's pointing that needs to be redone where mortar has pushed out. There's a fair amount of the paints falling off of the wings that are painted brick rather than the, compared to the tower, which is natural brick. There are no areas that are of structural concern. So that's certainly present. It does need to be attended to, but it's a maintenance sort of concern. The bricks of any building of this age, they will start to be isolated failures. They just need to be repaired. The roof would be a bigger concern in the short term just to patch where needed so that we don't start taking water into the building.
Bill Hickey, Bill Smith has his hand raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Yes, I'm part of the consultant team, Bill Smith with BICU Associates. And I'd like to ask if, when council members ask questions, if you could help me out by identifying yourself. I'm sort of taking notes for the meeting. And so that would be really helpful if, when you ask a question, you could just mention your name. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, Bill. That last question came from Councilmember Anthony Hicks. Any other questions for consultants or for the advisory committee? Thank you for that presentation. We look forward to continued updates and look forward to the work of both the consultants and the advisory committee. So thank you for that presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, Rebecca Lynn Peterson has her hand raised. Didn't see you. Sorry, Rebecca. Go ahead.
No, I was just clapping.
Sorry, I mistook that clap for a hand raise. All right, well, I'll help you. We'll join you in that, Rebecca. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll move along. Under new business, this evening, we have two items. First item is an updated grant proposal to increase the acreage for the Prairie City USA through Wildlife. You know, Prairie Foundation Wildlife Forever. Guy, did you want to give us an update? I believe it's a handful of acres, some pretty high profile.
Total number of acres is kind of yet to be determined. Some of the sites that were in the packet changed just late this afternoon. So if Clara can pull up a couple of those. Rather than doing any work in Wright Park, two water tower sites have been selected. So it'd be working along Progress Drive, up around the tower, and then back around, kind of along land to the east, east of some Port Authority land. So that's the Cleveland Avenue Tower. So you can see it's kind of a U shape around the tower, not actually on the tower site proper, but the city-owned land. And then there you can see the Progress Drive around the tower proper, and then that triangle that goes down along.
Quality circuits?
Quality circuits, yeah. So, and then the area that's in the white lines here is the area that's been defined in Kennedy Park. So not the entire park, but just a few acres within that 13-acre parcel. So the grant requires a match. But this go-around, we'll just do an in-kind match with some labor and some chemical application. Last year, we took funds from Liquor Store profits and matched with. Last year, we took funds from Liquor Store profits and matched with those. This year, like I said, just the in-kind donation. And the program, three areas that they did last year, two at the golf course and one out of Ferber Park, actually, are really coming along nicely. We can share some photos of those. But they took off really nice and just getting one more step closer of being the first Prairie City USA.
And again, just to significantly reduce the amount of area that we have to mow. It costs us, ultimately, it's to beautify, but also to save taxpayer dollars by not having to mow. Jim?
Glenn, have they expanded what they're going to do at the golf course?
They haven't expanded it, no.
Okay, so it was always going to be what they're, I mean, Lance has removed a lot of trees this year by a number eight T-box for them to fill that whole thing in. And I guess I didn't realize that that was in the original plan.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Okay.
Scott?
Guy, there was some work done, this restoration work around Lake Alice last year also. Was that a part of this or was that a separate activity that the city just did on their own apart from this grant?
That was apart from this grant, but we partnered with Otter Tail County Soil and Water District on that little project up there.
Okay.
So we could achieve this by resolution? Do we need a resolution on this? I assume if it's a grant application, someone would like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Caroline?
I'll second.
Thank you, Justin. Any further comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Final item under New Business is an updated agreement with the Ferber Park, and that's another grant application. Is that correct, Andrew? Would you like to address that? Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, Members. We approved the resolution at the last meeting, Resolution Number Eight, 2021. Just to read verbatim from the request from Petal, Fergus Falls. It says, "In addition to authorizing the application and agreement to accept the funds and serve as a fiscal host, the resolution also needs to include that the City of Fergus Falls hereby assures the Ferber Mountain Bike Trail will be maintained for a period of no less than 20 years." And then it goes on to state that this grant includes purchase of a trail grooming machine that would be used to maintain the trail. It is anticipated that this would continue to be a public-private partnership as it is now. The action before you this evening is to amend the previous resolution to include what I just mentioned, related to the 20 years of operations at Ferber Park.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you. Jim, any questions, comments?
Fabulous resource in the community.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There is no miscellaneous announcements that I have this evening. So with that, we will be adjourned to a closed meeting to consider a real estate offer pursuant to Minnesota State Statute Section 13D.05. Good evening, everyone. Hey, Tom. Hey, Tom. I gotta run.